All right, everybody, I'm calling this meeting to order at six oh one. Thank you for attending tonight. First item of business on the agenda is the filling of vacancy term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. That's in sub district two. I don't, I'm not sure if we have any volunteers for sub district two here in person tonight. And unless anyone online has anything to say, then we will defer that until next month. Up next, item three on the agenda, public safety monthly reports. Up first, Honolulu Fire Department.
Hello, hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is Eldon Tanaka. I'm a captain, fire captain here at the Waikiki Fire Station. I have firefighter one Cameron Mandigat is going to be reading off our April statistics for this month.
So for the month of April, in this area, there have been zero structure fires, zero wildland slash brush fires, one nuisance fire, that's such as a trash fire. That's not in a structure or vehicle, one cooking fire and one activated alarm that did not have a fire. As far as other emergencies, there's been sixteen medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, six motor vehicle crashes or collisions, that's just vehicle on vehicle, seven mountain rescues typically Diamond Head, one ocean rescue and three hazardous materials incidents. Those are typically fluid spills, gasoline, things like that on the road. As far as our fire safety tips announcement this month, it's about home fire sprinklers. So sprinklers are the first line of defense against fire, often extinguishing the fire. The fire is fast and moves quickly and can become deadly in less than two minutes. There's a lot of synthetic materials in our homes now, such as plastics that burn quickly and produce poisonous smoke. Those at the highest risk of home and fire are are small children, older adults and people with disabilities and pets. The sprinklers protect your home and family by activating automatically and immediately to control the fire so everyone can escape. The best protection from fire is having working smoke alarms, fire sprinklers and a fire escape plan that you practice. For more information, we have a homefiresprinkler.org or we can also go online to fire.honolulu.gov. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments for HFD? Seeing none, anyone from the public online have any questions or comments for HFD? Seeing none, board members here in person for HFD? Seeing none, board members online, are there any questions or comments for HFD? Seeing none, thank you very much. Up next, Honolulu Police Department District Six. Is there anyone from HPD District Six? Seeing none at the moment, HPD District Seven? All right, if they show up later, we can always go back to that. Up next, item four, community concerns. Anyone from the audience tonight have community concerns? Seeing none. Yes, please wait a moment. Is there anyone from the public online who has any community concerns?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I see Laura Ruby.
Yes, okay, can I share my screen for a minute?
Yes.
Okay, let's see, I have to do double, just a second, double tricks here. Okay, I need to do share, yeah. Okay, you should be seeing my whole screen now, is that correct?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, okay, today I'm talking about another aspect of the reason why the ill-proposed bridge should not go forward. And I sent many of you people the email that I just sent this morning. And you'll notice that there is a contact to sign the petition if you'd like to. This is my third email. Anybody who wants to at the very end, I have my email address and you can contact me and I'll send you the other two. But today it's about our endemic birds, our special Colea and white tern. And I wanted to start off with saying the naming that they have used with the Pono is problematical. We cannot use Hawaiian words that have deep meaning and affix them to any development projects. We implore those appropriating those words to stop using them. Another sacred violation is our growing concern for Hawaii's native environment, those protected native creatures that live here with us, especially the Colea and white tern. So I sent some pictures in case people hadn't seen them running around on their fields. They're so cute and they change their coloring throughout the time that they're here. And right now they're in Alaska, but they'll be coming back in the fall or most of them will be. For many decades, I've heard the Colea homing in on the Alawakai Canal on the way to their fields in our neighborhoods. It's a delight to hear them return and I have, if you will click on that when you have it, you'll hear them. And you'll have to say I've not seen them because it's evening, but I can hear them and I've heard them for many decades now. They're protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act of nineteen eighteen. And this, it's about the endangered species and you can see that it's about the threats and especially to open oil pits, power lines, glass, gas flares, cell phone tires and wind turbines, which kill millions of birds each year. And this is what's going to kill them is the big tower with the cables and the lighting that's going to go over the non-appropriate bridge. These are the white terns here. And then they usually nest in trees and then they go over and they grab fish and the water and then they come back home to their birds. And they do not have nests and trees, they have nests, they really just have their eggs laid between branches. So here's a couple of things from the Not Pono Bridge planters themselves. The Colea will fly into their summer home. I listen to them. And this is what it's going to look like to the poor birds. They will run into these big cables and this trucey tower and the bridge itself will be not good. And then the lighting you can see will also distract them. And as you know, if you know the history of birds getting very confused with big obstacles and with lighting, they end up falling to their deaths on the ground and also into the water. So please, the plumber, the planners' lack of understanding of the environment and the site itself is really a concern. And I urge you to name anybody you can to alert them to this, especially if our wonderful little protected species are endangered. So at the bottom, you can see my email address, my phone number, I will send everything to you. And the petition is also there online if you'd like to see it. I want to be very short, but are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Laura?
Yes, Laura, this is Arlene Velasco. The question I have for you is what is the next step as far as taking this to our government officials such as the city planning department? Or if we have an architectural group that's overseeing development and has a vision for what they want our city to look like?
Well, thanks. We have over five hundred petitioners already saying they do not want this bridge. And I would suggest that who's going to be listening? We can try to get Calvin Say to listen to us, but he is not. He's avoided us several times over. And we can try to get the mayor's office. I just was able to have a conversation with the planner on the phone. And I asked for a meeting with the mayor. The mayor has been fairly righteous to sort of stop the heart transit corridor. And I think if he can see through, he will stop this also. It's neither imminent, no necessary. It doesn't need to be there. There's a huge confusion with what's going on with complete streets on the Alawakai Boulevard and the flood control. None of them are actually working together and that's an example of a government and not good array. Because there's only be one voice and they all work out of this one voice. So I think that you just have to keep, I don't want to say keep emailing people, but every time there's a neighborhood board meeting and anybody that looks like an official, you direct your attention to them. So I know Mr. Crokey is on the Zoom right now and I would implore him to also please, please take back this information to the mayor and hope that the mayor will put a hold on it. This, as I said in the town hall meeting, this, there are many, with many, many sentences. This is just a planning that needs to be relegated to the archives in the basement of the Fosse Building, like so many other plans. They do not, it does not have to go through. Okay, thank you.
Winston?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you, Laura, for coming tonight. I just had a quick question, which is, where can people find out more information about this that may not necessarily be the city's website? Is there things that you've gathered that's in one place that people could go to?
I am, are you there? I am trying to send an email every week about the important aspects of the bridge that are definitely not Pono. And so this week was about the endangered species. I will do another one that has to do about the history and everything. So I can do a compilation, but I'll be glad to put you on my email list and you can receive one each week until I go through all of them. I will be talking about the design next week or the future week. And it will go on, last time I talked about the huge number, amount of concrete that's going in that will obstruct the local and the visitors' views. So my email is right there, is, I'll put it in the chat also. And then you can please sign in. So thank you, Winston. Any other, you want to further your question?
That's it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Are there any other public or community concerns?
I have something.
Yes.
Yeah, I missed last month's meeting, but my concern is still the permitting and planning department. I haven't heard anything about them furthering the development of our neighborhood five, number five, and to convert it to looking like the Makiki area. We have a mixture of homes, five-story apartment buildings and condominiums, and I do not want that in our neighborhood. I want to keep it our single-family neighborhood.
Mr. Wong, thank you. Yeah, if you want to make that, we can like maybe put that on an agenda item for maybe next month's meeting or something like that. If you have any background information or anything you want to add later.
But I haven't heard anything more about it, except permitting and planning was planning to do something like that in our neighborhood to permit that to have, to happen. Talking to neighbors, we, the neighbors around me don't want it.
Well, if someone at the board wants to take that up, I guess at the next meeting, maybe we can, you know, okay, so we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, I was, part of my question for my concern for today is that I would have the same kind of question about the permitting process. I would like to ask the mayor's office for an explanation, explaining exactly how the permitting process is proceeding now, especially in light of the corruption that was discovered a few years ago. And these people are now being held accountable. I'd like to know what's going on in the, in the current office. I am concerned about some of the projects that have been approved.
Well, not, I'm sorry, you know, like not to, this is just a public testimony. So that's why I was just offering to.
Alright, sorry.
Yeah, we can defer it, but when we get to like the mayor's rep and stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Michelle?
Just to briefly mention that we had a resolution to this effect concerning our three communities within the larger district requesting a transfer out of the primary urban center high development area and into a sustainable communities plan. And I believe our council member Waters was working on this. We did get a confirmation from him. And yet there has not been anything substantive, which is a concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who has any additional comments or concerns they'd like to raise? All right, thank you. Up next, government administration reports, mayor's representative.
Good evening, this is Anton Crokey. Thank you, Chair. I, in terms of what we've reviewed in the previous meetings, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so in the previous meetings, we had really two major areas of concerns from, from the board. And one was about streets and, and, and streetlights and all those things. The other were about trees and such. And so my strategy for each of those is I've brought Director, your friend, Director Roger Morton to the, to the meeting tonight. And I'll turn this over to him in a second. I just want to make sure, and then I will also bring the Department of Parks and Rec has just recently hired a new forestry person. And then I'll brief that person on some of the issues that you brought up in the meeting. And I'll bring him along to a meeting so you can talk to him directly. So hopefully that, that's, that's helpful to you. And then I'll take any questions you have now and then, then I'll turn it over to Director Morton.
Okay, is there anyone here in the audience who has any questions? All right, seeing none, members of the public, I see Daisy Marai.
All right, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Director, and thank the mayor for having the public express their concerns about the community area because it does affect all of us. The question is, any other development plan for the Royal Waikiki Gardens by the Alawakai Gulf Park or development for some residential complex? I mean, you know, people are kind of worried that that area is going to turn into another Waikiki section. So any other news that, I'm not sure if Director Morton might have any idea, but it is a concern to the area because it's going to encroach upon the community and turn it into another Waikiki expansion. So there is concerns. So I don't know if you heard any other development plans because we still have the US Army Corps of Engineers doing their flood mitigations, which has not finalized their draft yet. So there's a lot of concerns for this area. Appreciate any update. Thank you.
Well, I'm not exactly sure which, which piece of the properties that you're concerned about. You know, the one property was approved for that development on Kapialani, which is a high-rise. That's already been approved by council. The city bought Waikiki Vista, which is the old Tokai University HPU property. And eventually that's going to be put into affordable housing in that, in that one. But that building's already constructed. So those are the two I know about. If there's others you want to know about, I can, I can research them and get back to you.
Yes, because every so often we see it being broadcast on like an ad to say, come and buy a piece of, be part of the complex. I'm not sure it's going to be a condo complex thing, but there's nothing really substantive. So no one has any idea until maybe it's built and it'll be too late. So that's why we have concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, well, also you can always email me and I can check out something specific. It's anton.crokey@honolulu.gov. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Laura, did you have your hand up again?
Yes, I have, I just want to compliment the mayor for having such an excellent town hall last week. He addressed every single question that they had time for anyway. He knew everybody's name. He listened. He answered every single question or comment that people had. I just find that really commendable. I hope he does more than once a year because we certainly have, we want to know the very good concerns that Daisy has and I have and Winston and everybody else has about the overdevelopment that's going to be thrust into our neighborhoods. Unfortunately, the Kui Lake Place was a done deal. We never got to say anything about it. We never got to do any planning. It starts first with communities coming together and having an opportunity to plan what they would like. And that, if that's still an opportunity in the case that Daisy brought up, that would be great. It's, it's really about the community. And if, if the mayor wants to go down in history as the best, he's going to, he's going to listen to all of us, I hope. Thank you.
Well, thank you for those comments. I was out of town for that particular town hall. I've been on all the others. And in fact, right after I get off this call, I'm going to a town hall in Kali. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other residents, hands raised. I'm going to go to board members in person. I'll just start with you, Arlene.
Okay, is this when I can ask the mayor? Okay, so my question is, I would like to understand, I would like to have an explanation of exactly of the permitting process and what, how that is being done, how developments are being analyzed. And in particularly, I asked a question at the town hall meeting of the wastewater manager if the effects of sea level rise were being taken into account when these buildings were being permitted. And he said they have not. So that currently there is no consideration of sea level rise, which is very concerning to me since all you have to do is go down Waikiki and you can see with the key tides that we have, buildings are pumping out their garages right now. So we have a real issue on hand. And I also have one other concern and that's the definition of affordability. I think I'd like to see a spreadsheet with that and how they budget a family and decide that a mortgage of four hundred thousand is affordable for a family making a moderate income. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Laura.
Yeah, I don't know how you say exactly the permitting process, but we've automated a lot. You know, we've changed. We have a new director. Director Dawn Taiju, she, she's very good. They're automating things. They're bringing down the backlog. That seems to be the biggest complaint. Your, your, your conversation was a little bit different. There are specifics that you want to make sure are reviewed. They also have an online process that's a little quicker and, and they're automating with some, with some AI in the process for the stuff that just is just rudimentary that to get through to shorten the timeframe. I'll go back and check into the water rise issue again and, and, and talk to some of the folks on that. The, you know, the permitting issue, it isn't like what's it like because that, that person finally admitted that they took money. And I saw that in the paper. That was the last of those individuals. But, you know, we're trying to streamline it. It's a high priority for the mayor. And, you know, that's, that's what we try to do. I think the rules, when you, when you ask for the exact rules of how it works, they're online and they're there for review. In terms of affordability, most of the affordabilities are for rentals. And the affordability is really based on, on a HUD grid that comes out. And so it's, it's which neighborhood in the community and how many workers, how many people in the family. And they'll come up with a, with a number that is, is what's affordable at an AMI rate, the average medium income. And thirty percent is generally below thirty percent is houseless, right? And above, it would get around sixty percent. Now you're getting into what they call workforce housing, sixty to a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI. The state says affordability is a hundred and forty percent. The city defines it as a hundred and twenty percent. That's where that, that area is, a lot of the areas where my department gives vouchers for renters in, in that area. So it's not as much affordability in terms of the total price of a, of a place you were buying. It's mostly figured into, into the rentals that we have. When the city, like we'll be doing another offering coming out in the fall. I put together both affordable housing money, home money, which is HUD money and federal relief funds. And we'll come out with something that's about forty-nine million dollars. And what that does is it tops off developers and, and, you know, our five million into a, into a project. What that will do is, is it does, their projects are large. But if they want that five million, they have to agree to keep it at sixty percent AMI for sixty years. And so it's one of the ways the city can make more affordability out there for, for people that are, that are trying to rent. The buying problem is a whole nother discussion and I could go through that differently. But anyway, that, that's some information on the affordability.
Thank you, Laura.
I would like either a phone number or email for when we see a street light that's out.
Okay, I'll defer that to Director Morton when he gets on.
Sure, the easiest way is to just report it on the app. And, but you can also call the Department of Facility Maintenance, who's responsible for the streetlights and the repair. The Department of Design and Construction usually has big-scale projects on streetlights, converting them to LED, for example, was one of their projects. They, they've just recently completed that project. I know the, the personnel in both departments, the easiest way is to, is to report it on the, on the city app. And, and someone will come out and even in my neighborhood, I've, I've reported it and had my, my lights changed within about a two-week, three-week period.
Yeah, and that app is Honolulu three-one-one.
One-one, did I not yet? It's the three-one-one app. That's the easiest way.
Okay, Michelle?
Thank you. Good evening, Roger. It's nice to see you.
Nice to see, nice to hear you, Michelle. I can't, you don't have your camera on.
Just to back up a bit for Director Crokey, we had about ten, I'm sorry, fourteen issues that we brought up at the last meeting. I'm sure you're going to, Roger, I'm sure you're going to address several of these. But apart from that, we had a large concern about the unsightly construction base yard along Kapahulu Avenue and using the Alawakai Golf Course as a construction staging area, which is preservation land. Also something about the Honolulu Salary Commission. And an update for a few things on Kapahulu Avenue as well as Department of Design and Construction to implement a policy that all DDC's departmental clients be required to present their projects to the neighborhood boards. Apart from that, the key issues, of course, are the trees, the privately planted trees on Leahi Avenue, which will grow into the utility, pull wires, creating hazards as well as faulty service. The pedestrian pathway to the school on the Malka side of Leahi Avenue. And different things like street closures affecting our ingress and egress in the Alawakai Canal area.
Okay. Well, Roger, let me go through a couple of those that I, before you turn on to yours. Thank you. I answered the question on the golf course about that last time. And so I did submit the answers on that, that they weren't going to move the pieces there. I did talk to DDC about the presenting piece and they're evaluating it. They understand the need for public input on their projects on the trees. You know, that's going to, we're going to, let's wait for we get the expert from urban forestry here. Right? And the salary commission, that's a salary commission. That's, you know, that's not really something that, that we deal with. They're doing that. That's with them and the council. So you can talk to the council rep about that. And I think that covers most of the ones you said. And the other ones would be under Roger. So, so that, Roger, I'll turn, Director Morton, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so we talked, you talked, you brought Leahi trees and I guess Anton said that urban forestry will come and take a look at those. You also brought up the pedestrian pathway. Let me, let me talk about that a little bit. When we took the city, when the city took Leahi back, we did our best to, to restrict some areas for the Kiki to run. It was kind of a compromise. We chose the Malka side where there is an asphalt pathway that leads to a concrete pathway by the school. That's one of eight hundred miles of roadway that needs sidewalks in our town. We are, we have sidewalks are now, after forty-five years of no sidewalks, we are proposing to put some projects together to do sidewalks and walkways within neighborhoods. We do have a pedestrian plan that does not include Leahi Avenue right now. We do have a pedestrian plan that does not include Leahy Avenue right now because it was a private road. My, my staff have told me that they will be putting Leahy into our pedestrian plan now that the city has taken over responsibility for, for Leahy. Doing eight hundred miles of sidewalk is more than a billion dollars worth of project. And it, it will take time. We have prioritized about seven projects in different parts of Oahu. Some in, uh, in, in the, the west side, some in Kalii, some in other neighborhoods around the island. We are going to try to put Leahy back on a safe routes to school, again, now that it is back under city control. So we are, you know, committed to, to looking at getting that back in. That's what helps us to prioritize. An area will be to first get it into that, into our pedestrian, uh, pedestrian master plan and to get it into our safe routes to school plan. Safe routes to school is a little complicated now. It started out as a federal program. The state used to commit, to submit, to provide the city with some funding for that. In the last, paradoxically, in the last federal update of the transportation plan, they did not fund that program at the federal level. They did fund a, a broader program called Safe, Safe Streets for All as a discretionary program. However, the state has recently passed appropriations to do, to put money back into safe streets or safe routes to school. We haven't seen how the state, whether the state will provide funding through the state to the county, but we're waiting on that. It was just done this last session and have, have no rules right now.
All right, Winston.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, uh, I know Doc, Director Croky, that you're, you're driving. So, um, yeah, I do want to, if you can take back to the mayor that we really did appreciate last week, great to come out into the community and have everyone, we missed, we missed, I think both of you weren't, weren't there. But yeah, we missed your presence, especially Mr. Croky, who has our representative. And one of the things that we did bring up was the, the stress, the need that we have department folks coming out way before, not just a fait accompli to announce that we're going to have a, a project coming up, but to come out and say, we're thinking about it. Let's get some input from the very beginning. That's an important point. Couple of things, maybe Mr. Croky, you can help with this, is the, this Michelle mentioned, the eyesore on Kapahulu. What's happened is that DES did answer the question last week. They said they are going to use that auxiliary parking lot, which is typically locked at the golf course, for the golf course's own improvements. Now, I don't know what there's going to be, but given the amount of non-machinery or buildings on Kapahulu right now, I think they could effectively split that parking lot. So if we could do that, and they're using that as a staging ground for Aloei, this is not a construction zone. Whatever that is that's on there, that needs to be moved entirely. That's the, I think it's the state, but I'm not, I, I, so it can, it should be moved, I don't know, wherever an appropriate industrial zone is, but it doesn't belong on that, on that land. And it's not the golf course that's using it. They're, they're, they have their own. The other thing is, the mayor was receptive to the idea of like a Kokua Kapahulu or Kokua Kahala, where we have some citizen volunteers that go through and help the city find some spots that need things, whether it's spray painting out stuff or locations for more trash cans or, you know, places to put trees, whatever it is, just to be some eyes and ears on the ground to help the city. So maybe we can work on that together, Mr. Croky, in some format. And finally, the, uh, Kapialani Park, I, I know that there's a, might be a presentation coming up, but the, the trustees of, of Kapialani Park, which is the city council, they wear different hats, is having a meeting and a presentation about that. But they have a plan to repair or to replace all of the lights in there. And we just want to make sure that those lights comport with keeping as dark skies as possible, that are not going to interfere with birds and, and just the, the, the ambiance of the park. And I think, Mr. Croky, you mentioned that Urban Forestry has a new division chief that's there, and it's Roxanne Adams. And she's extremely qualified, used to run UH's Arbor, uh, UH's entire campus and all of the UH Systems Tree Program. She's eminently qualified, and I think if she came and gave a presentation, people would be thrilled to see the, the quality that we're getting in the city. So thank you very much.
You know, you're welcome, Winston. I, you know, let's, let's email back and forth and talk about that because I, I didn't get any, any movement on the, on the Aloei Golf Course where they're doing the staging. I did, you asked me about Kapahulu Avenue and, and doing more cleanups on there. And, and really, you know, you're getting your fair share by once a week. If they did more, we take their, the words where they'd be taking away from other areas in the city. So that was a tough one. But, and your input on the Kapialani Park trustees, submit testimony to them. I mean, it's an open, uh, it's an open meeting that's held in the council chamber. So I'd go that route, but I'd be glad to work with you. The community combined efforts where we use our facilities and you work on things like planning and, and things like that, those are excellent events. So let's work on that.
Okay. Thank you. Michelle.
Uh, yes, thank you. Regarding planning, of course, Roger, I think we had some discussions about some neighborhood board representatives getting together with you for fine tuning a safety plan for Leahy Avenue. A lot of ideas were already generated, and I think you are familiar with some. And instead of waiting for safe routes to school, which will probably preempt and pre-plan for a neighborhood they're not familiar with, we do need to get together for proper planning, and I'd like to encourage that sort of connection at this point so that we can all be on the same page and be prepared and working together. Thank you.
Yeah, Michelle, I, I think that we, there was discussion about having a meeting in the neighborhood. And I brought that up to my staff, and we're, we're, we're fine to, to meet with the neighborhood. You know, if we can, we can come up with a time. I don't know if that was your recommendation to do that or, or others in the community, but I'm fine with meeting.
It was collective, I believe, and I think that's a great green light for all of us. So thank you very much.
If, if I could make one small request, could we schedule it after rail opens? I am pretty taxed right now, just making sure that our June thirtieth and July fourth period work. And I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm just scheduled to, uh, a lot right now. But that'll be, uh, that'll be done in a, in, in just a, another forty-two days, but who's counting?
We're counting on it.
Hi, I wanted to ask Roger Morton, did you get the photographs that I took about Leahy, the parking spaces?
Laura, I did, and, uh, and we looked at, there, there were a couple of, okay, let's start, let's start and talk about the T intersection, first of all. That, one, one of the unfortunate things, if you will, of the city taking over a street and taking responsibility for it is then we, uh, we follow our protocols, our standards, and we follow the, the ordinance on how streets are done. And one of the ordinances does not allow parking on the backside of a T intersection. I think this is around the community park that, what you're talking about. I know that there are other areas on the Makai side of, of Leahy. Uh, and I did ask my staff to go out and look at, at whether we could squeeze one or two additional parking areas there. Uh, and, and some of them, you know, one of them is by the home, by the, I forget the, whether it's the greenhouse or, or the other one. I, I have not got, gotten heard back from them, other than they, they had opined to me that the, the ground there was not appropriate, and that's why they, they did not allow the parking there. The parking on the Makai side is actually on parkland. It's not on streetland. It's on parkland. It, it is back to the way it was, basically. And it is technically by ordinance, there's no parking allowed there, but that's the same as, you know, fifty thousand other parking spots around the island. And I, I, I personally think that at some point, we probably have to go back and look at the ordinance that provides it to, because right now, I think the situation is that it's a live and let live. But if somebody complains about it, then HPD will go out and will enforce no parking areas in some cases. So, uh, that's, that's the situation with the parking areas that you immediately asked about, which, which I, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was across, uh, from that T intersection.
There's one by the yellow house.
Okay, that's the one I mentioned by the house too.
Twenty, more than twenty feet past the intersection, there would be room for two more. And that is just gravel on top of dirt.
Yeah. I, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll ask my staff to look specifically at those two sites. I think that there probably would have to be at least minimal improvement of, of those areas because it looked like the issue was that there, there wasn't the same type of base that there was in other parts of, of Leahy where there is parking. Is that, i- i- is that a, a, a correct statement? I mean, you know it better than I do, Laura.
People have been parking on that spot for years.
Okay.
And until, you know, until those plastic delineators went in.
Right.
That's, if those came out, there would be, I think, three parking spaces. There was another article that I found in the newspaper that if Bill twenty goes through, if someone is displaying a valid disability placard, that there is supposed to be a place for them to park, and it's going to be illegal not to have a place for them to park. There is no disabled parking in that pool A circle or on Leahy in that area.
Okay, I, I'm, uh, I, I'll be happy to look at that, but it, the, the issue, and I have this problem islandwide, is I can't regulate an area that technically does not allow parking. I can't put up a, uh, disabled parking only if the underlying spot is technically not legal to park in.
Okay, at Pool A Circle, there would be space for a disabled parking spot.
Okay. We have very few of those around the, the island now, uh, but I, I'll, I'll, I'll specifically ask our folks to look at that, Laura. And the three, and the three spots by the, by the yellow house, those are, you say those were, have been parked there for years, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it was where the community garden people used that parking because they only have one spot on Pa'ke.
Yeah, I know parking is a huge issue islandwide, and, and, but I'll, I'll be happy to take a look at the, at those three, three spots if, if I, if I've got them right. I know which ones you're talking about, or the, the space there in any case.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands, uh, thank you very much, Director Croky and Director Morton.
Thank you.
Moving on to item, or item B, Honolulu Board of Water Supply, Kathleen Pahinui let my office and me know that she will not be able to make it tonight. Unfortunately, she has a conflict with another meeting. Up next, Kapialani Community College, is there a representative? All right, the governor's representative.
Good evening. Let's see, well, first of all, I just thought I'd share with you a couple of highlights that have happened just recently within the administration, and that this is Public's Pride and Public Service Week. So if you haven't already seen the flags that are flying along the Capitol in front of there, there've been a number of activities related to Pride, Pride and Public Service Week. That's actually kind of hard to say. Not the least of which today was the very first ever inaugural Sheriff's Division Meritorious Awards and Leadership Skill Ceremony. So there's a number of people who received awards and were recognized today. I don't want to take everybody's time to read every name, but I certainly extend my congratulations to them. And I encourage you to check out the media stories and, and to check out the press releases to see who all received those awards. In addition, the Sheriff's Department, I know this is a big source of pride for them, and it really hasn't made the news much lately, but they actually won a major national award just this past year. Actually, and it was recognized just this past week, they got new uniforms, and they put a lot of effort into those uniforms and made them very intentional in the colors and the, the design of them. And they received a Best Dressed Award from the National Association of Uniform Manufacturers. It's a big deal. And so there were hundreds of nominations, and they took first place. So it's something to be very proud of, again, from, from our Sheriff's Division. We were talking a little bit earlier about walking and sidewalks. This is also Bike Month here in Hawaii. And it's just something to keep in mind, too, when we talk about being safe and everything else that's associated with transportation. When we talk about transportation, and this is near and dear to the Energy Office where I work, whether it's bicycle or walking or anything like that, is really a form of energy efficiency. We think of energy efficiency in turning off the lights, but anytime we can avoid getting behind the wheel of an automobile, even if it's an electric one, we're saving energy by doing that. So that is one of the reasons why we are definitely always reminding folks to consider those alternative forms of transportation, because it really is a form of energy efficiency. And it's important because the more that we can save energy, the less we have to generate. And that leads me to my final point today. Governor is on Big Island, doing a unveiling of a new solar plus storage facility in Big Island, and, which doesn't really affect us here because we're, we're not connected to Big Island. But it is something, obviously, that there, again, all of us are concerned about. And yesterday, when I was pulling up some information for a reporter, I, I pulled up some facts that I just thought I would share with all of you in terms of how we're doing from a renewable energy perspective. Right now, here on Oahu, our renewable, we're standing at about, let me get to the number here, just so I give you the right one. Right about twenty-eight percent of our generation right now in Oahu is coming from renewable energy sources. The largest single amount of that is coming from rooftop solar, at fourteen percent, followed up by utility solar, then biomass, including the H Power Plant, and three point three percent is coming from wind and a little bit from biofuels. We are expecting four new plants to come online in twenty twenty-three, still this year, including the West Oahu Solar Plus Battery Storage, uh, solar facility that's community-based solar. Actually, two community-based solar, and then the Kapale Energy Storage Facility, which is a very large standalone battery storage system. And that is really intended to help provide stability to the overall grid, and that's down at Kapale. So there were another six to seven projects that are slated to come online in the next few years, and there are more coming up in an RFP. So overall, making good progress. The state, as an average, stands about forty percent right now, kind of ahead of plan. Every island is different. Hawaii is at seventy percent, and they're getting very close to being at a hundred percent on a daily basis. So they, they hit one hundred percent every now and then, but they are putting in place some technology that probably will take them and allow them to be our first island that hits a hundred percent. Oahu's on the lower end, but there, again, every island's different. We've got the population, less, less land size, you know, all of the things that, that make it different here. So anyway, just sharing that with you and happy to answer any questions if you have them.
All right, anyone here have questions? Yes, Laura.
This is not a question, but I was watching the news tonight, and Dr. Governor Josh Green, they ran, when they were on the Big Island, they ran into an overturned vehicle.
They encountered it. They didn't run into it.
They what?
They encountered it. They didn't run into it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. But, um, so he checked the guy out. They did get the guy out of the car. get the guy out of the car and he was okay, but that was.
Yes, thank you. I wasn't gonna bring that up, yes.
Anyone else in person? No? I see Alan?
Hi, good evening. I just had a comment about your, you know, use of electric bikes and whatnot for the governor is that, you know, as a state worker, I, I myself ride my bike, ride the bus every day to work downtown, but if there was a place to park e-bikes, I'd ride an e-bike. But there's no place to park them downtown and I'm afraid it'd get stolen.
That's actually something my office has been working on, so I'll take that back. But that's something that I know we've had some projects underway, talking to DAGs to see if we can't get some secured bike racks just for that purpose. Several of our employees ride their bikes downtown. I ride the bus, so I, I understand where you're coming from. Yeah.
Great.
Uh, Laura?
Me? Yes, it may or may not be in the governor's office, but I once saw heat maps. And if you're talking about bicycling and taking the bus and doing other kinds of energy conservation and good citizenry, the heat maps will tell you a lot about where people can endeavor to plant more things or to lower the temperature there. Do you know where they are located and can we, can you put it in the chat if you know? I don't know where they are.
Heat maps, I will look on that. I know what you're talking about and I know, I don't know offhand where they are, but I will check on that and provide that.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, it's from all the parking spaces.
Yep.
Michelle?
Thank you. Hello Claudia, thank you very much for your report. I believe at last meeting, we discussed the governor's interest in meeting with board representatives concerning our concerns about the resolution that we had passed and the myriad regulatory exemptions for development and that McCullough Ely Ely Neighborhood Board, number eight representatives would be included. But I did not get any contact information nor have I heard from anyone. So if you could please provide that either to our chair or on the chat, I'd really appreciate it. And then I could contact you.
So I did actually see an email that went out, so I will just resend it. It's possible it didn't go directly to you. I think it might've gone to Mr. Welch. And I thought it got copied to you as well, but I'll double check that. I've got it in my email, so I'll check on that and resend that invite. But the invitation is open to meet with our Housing Department. So yes, I will forward that to you.
Well, I think it would be better to meet with the governor and the people who allow the myriad exemptions to developers to build wherever, however, and whenever they want at this point, because we have a very serious concern about protecting our established communities. And we have adopted a resolution unanimously to that effect, and that was the purpose of our request.
Yep, understand. So I will forward that email to you and then I'll kind of step out of the way so that I don't have to be the gatekeeper and make sure that you have the opportunity to make that arrangement. So yes, I forward that to you.
Excellent. We will, we will start there and then know where to proceed after that. And thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, Winston, do you still have your hand raised?
Yes, sir. Yeah. And I, I can forward that email as well. Thank you Claudia for coming today. I just had a, a quick question or comment concern. It, it's also to do with trees. The, the state doesn't have an overarching best practices policies as far as how we take care of our trees. And this is a real easy, it's a real easy reach. We have departments that actually do have really good manuals, like the Department of Transport, Transportation, the State Department of Transportation. Those could be modified and adopted by executive order throughout all of the departments, divisions, and all contractors that work with the state. I routinely see, like right now at the Poly, where they're construct, reconstructing essentially the surface of the moon, they park these giant chewing devices that eat the, the pavement. They park them right on top of the tree roots. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's in their contract that says they, they have a tree exclusion zone. You're not supposed to park essentially under a canopy because that's where the roots are. And they, they're, they're still doing it. They do it on, on Liki Liki even after being notified by others. So if we could get the governor to work with interested groups, and I'd be happy to help with that, of instituting a best practices policy using the state's already existing resources, that would be, I think, beneficial and cost effective for citizens, better for the trees, better for the birds. It's a win all the way around. So, and I'm happy to help you with that. And I think you have my email and contact info.
I do. I'll follow up just to clarify so that I understand what exactly you're, I, I, yeah, okay, I will follow up to get some clarification on that.
Let's get best practices instituted throughout all state and contractors working for the state and any organ.
As it relates to trees, even on highway projects or things like that.
Correct. And anything that the state has any interest in at all, needs to have uniform policies on, on best practices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands raised? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have my hand raised.
Oh. Who?
Margaret.
Oh, okay. Margaret?
Another idea would be to stop subsidizing parking downtown for public workers, most of whom are eight to five and could take public transit, transit, opening up parking and lessening traffic. Maybe give hollow, hollow carts rather than assigned parking downtown. They were talking about electric charging stations for government workers. But I think that maybe we should put our money where our mouth is and start, you know, especially if they're sitting at the death, their deaths all day, maybe have a staff cars if they need to move around the city. But it might be something to think about, just start, start with the stop, stop, stop subsidizing the parking downtown for public workers.
Okay, thank you. All right. Up next, item six, presentations, Honolulu Disc Golf Association. And I know that we had Alan Borsky online, and then we also have a little demonstration of what it looks like over here in person too.
Yes, hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me fine?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody first for letting us take this opportunity to talk to you guys for a few minutes. My name is Alan Borsky. I am the president of the Honolulu Disc Golf Association. And also my vice president, Michael Conger is there in person to answer any questions and also show you kind of what we're talking about if you have any questions on that. So I'm going to share with you a little quick presentation and just talk about it for a few minutes. So we are seeking your consideration and input on an installation of an 18-hole disc golf course at Wahele State Recreation Area. The installation would include 18 metal baskets, natural tee pads, and signs directing players to each hole, and that's pretty much it. We previously submitted a proposal to DLNR, who was okay with the proposal in concept, but they wanted us to seek public review and concurrence, and that's, that's basically why we're here tonight. And for reference, Hawaii disc golfers have been playing up at Wahele for the past 14 years. So we also reached out to State Representative Jackson Sayama for his input on the project. And he was helpful in kind of pointing out to me that if we did put together some sort of course, that we need to take into consideration all the trails and all that. So we've done that. And what, what you're looking at now is a grade out area of, of kind of the area that would be used. It's pretty much all below the road on the entrance to the parks. It's pretty much in the, of what we would consider an underutilized part of the park. And what you're looking at here is, is a map that we came up with a layout. So 80% of this course, like I mentioned, is actually below the road on the entrance. In the underutilized section of the park, the entire course comprises about nine to 10 acres. The blue lines that you see are all the walking trails that go through this lower section and all the way up to the main area. The main parking lot is up here, the pavilion near the lookout is up here. And the, the area of the park that most of the users use is up above this area to the north. So we designed the layout of the course to allow for most of these trails to remain open to walkers, runners, bikers. And we also designed it so that the course begins up near the parking lot. Here's hole one, two, and then it goes down, down into this area and it ends back up at the parking lot. So who are we? Well, Honolulu Disc Golf Association, we've been around for over 20 years. We're a 501(c)(4) organization. We promote disc golf here on Oahu and throughout the state. And we continue to work towards the establishment of more permanent disc golf courses on Oahu and in the state, and build relationships with local government and state government, actually. We also organize and run monthly tournaments as well as larger statewide events and community outreach and education programs. So what have we done? Well, four years ago, we actually worked with the City of Honolulu to install the first public disc golf course on Oahu. It's out in Cunha at Kupuohi Neighborhood Park. So our organization, we donated the baskets to the city as well as the expertise and the materials needed to pour and set the concrete to install the baskets. We're also currently working with Senator Donovan De La Cruz to assist with his vision to add a disc golf course to the master plan for Wahele Freshwater Park. He approached us a few years ago and he's interested in using our expertise to help design the course. We also ran a demonstration event out there for the community a couple of years ago, and we continue to hold monthly events once or twice a year. So, okay, what is disc golf, right? It's basically played just like golf, except instead of using balls and clubs, players use a flying disc. And instead of hitting a ball off a tee and getting it down into a hole, the disc golf involves throwing a disc from a tee like you see in the picture here and hitting an above ground target in as few throws as you can. Disc golf courses are considerably shorter than ball golf courses and are usually measured, measured in feet instead of yards. So players begin from a tee area and they end at a target like the one you see in this picture, the most common of which is an elevated metal basket. So as players progress down the fairway, they must make each consecutive throw from the spot where the previous lie landed. And things like trees and shrubs and terrain changes located in and around the fairways and the course, that's what's challenging for disc golfers. They don't want a big, flat, open golf course like you see at Aloha or something. And anyway, so when the putt lands in the basket, the hole is complete and you go on to the next hole. And my VP, Michael Conger is there with an actual basket in person for you guys to take a look at. So disc golf, it shares, shares the same joys and frustrations as golf. However, unlike golf, disc golf is usually free. It, it's played in many public parks and it takes half as long to complete a round as you would for regular golf. You know, it's designed to be enjoyed by people of all ages and identity, and it's a great lifetime fitness activity. So how would our community here benefit? Well, for one, disc golf is affordable and it's accessible. A disc golf course would provide an inexpensive form of recreation for people of all ages and skill levels. There, there's actually more than 14,000 disc golf courses in the US. And, I'm sorry, in the world. And there's 60% of them are in public parks. And on top of that, 91% of them are free to play. That means all you need is a single disc, which can be purchased for less than $15 and you're ready to play. So how else can we benefit? Well, it's a new recreational resource for us here. The addition of a disc golf course would provide a new recreational resource for schools and youth in the area, and also for the wider community. It also has low impact benefits. Let's face it, you know, sometimes getting out to do something can take a lot of effort. And we'll forego asking for your gym, how, how often you've been going to the gym, but you know, imagine a sport that has been exercised, that has exercising benefits, not only for you, but for your family as well. And anyone can play, even your children. You know, if you give them a chance, they'll, they'll develop the skills. And if you have elderly relatives, like grandparents that want to join, you know, a brisk walk and family camaraderie will definitely make it worth your time. It also promotes like well-being. So disc golfers, they cover a lot of grounds. So it's been estimated that it takes upward of 6,500 steps to play a round of golf. Well, that's, that's over three miles. So that means that players are outside and they can cover more than half of the American Heart Association's recommended daily step count in under two hours. We all need that, right? In fact, disc golf has been highlighted by the state of Tennessee as part of their state-funded initiative to combat diabetes. There, there would also be less cars on the road. For a growing number of disc golfers that we have right here in Honolulu, the presence of a disc golf course in town would eliminate the need to travel across the island to play and would give them a base for which to further promote sport. We also think it would increase park safety up at Wahele. You know, many parks have enjoyed a decrease in vandalism and other unwanted activities as foot traffic increases in these, you know, previously underutilized areas of the park. And we, we've seen that up at Wahele, actually playing up there for many years. There's, you know, there's been homeless camps and dumping and graffiti. And the more that we're up there and the more that people are going to be using this underutilized area, we think that a lot of that bad stuff will go away. It's also cheaper than a playground. Okay? I mean, just try to tell us that schools are not looking for activities that can involve everyone and won't put a burden on our school budget. Schools can purchase discs that are durable and they'll last throughout the year. So, okay, where are the golf courses here in Hawaii? I can tell you that there's, there's two public golf courses on Maui, one in Apeli and one in Kahului. On the Big Island, there's four courses. Three of them are private. One is public. And on Kauai, there's four golf courses. There's two public and two private. What do we have here on Oahu? Well, we have the nine-hole course out of Kupuohi that we got installed. And there's a, a private pay-to-play course on the Hawaii Country Club grounds. There's also three courses on base, military bases here. That's how popular it is for the military, yet the, the public can't play them. So, you know, just some last thoughts here. We're, you know, we're, we're seeking your input and support for a golf course there in, in this under, underutilized area of the park. DLNR asked us to make this proposal to you folks as a first step to get your input, see what your thoughts are. And, and like I said, we feel there's many benefits to this community. And thank you for your time. And if you folks have any questions, we'd love to answer them for you now.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Is there anyone here in person who wants to speak on this? Board members? Yep.
How many?
Should be just.
How many people would you see being up at Wahele Park at a time to play this disc golf?
Well, what we see out in, at Kupuohi is, you know, it's kind of mixed throughout the week. It depends on people's schedules, really. Of course, you know, on the weekends, like any other park, they're going to be more busier than others. But a disc golf course can handle far more people than, say, a tennis court or a basketball court. You know, typically there's, you know, you go out in a group of, say, four people or more and you've got 18 holes. So, you know, a course can hold 70 people, not to say that they will, you know, there's going to be 70 people at a time playing there. But, you know, it can handle that.
I'm, I'm concerned about the parking at Wahele. You know, even though it's been slightly expanded, it's still very limited parking. And just the drive there, you know, it takes a lot of people through the community. And right now, we have people go up with trucks of bicycles, they bicycle down. But it's an area I would never consider underutilized. Uh, but it's an area, uh, I would never consider underutilized. Uh, I think that's kind of odd. Um, it, it's heavily used uh, for people were hiking, mostly hiking and picnicking. Um, it's a place where, you know, you expect more families and groups. Um, so, so I'm just questioning how this fits with that park.
Well, again, we're talking about, we're not talking about the area where all the picnic tables are and the pavilions are. We're talking about, like I said, below the road. This is an underutilized area where there really aren't too many people going through there.
But, but they would still be using the parking lot, which is limited. That's, that's where my question is.
Right. Well, I mean, like I mentioned in the beginning, there's been disc golfers playing up there now for the last 15 years and we haven't really, I mean, except weekends, which a lot of them don't really go up to play because it's too crowded up there in the weekends for parking. We don't really see an issue with parking.
Okay, we have a member of the public.
Yes, my name is Stan Ching. I'm a resident on Peter Street. I visit the park at least once a week. I'd walk my dog there. I'm quite familiar with the layout. I have been a resident there since 1965. Uh, so I know the trails fairly well. I know the, uh, the edges of the, uh, walkable area. I do have some concerns when I see the setup of the, uh, uh, the, the, the golf halls. I see a lot of broken, uh, uh, plants, uh, trees that are broken, uh, branches that are, uh, crumbled. I'm not maintained very well. We know that there's over a hundred riders, uh, over the weekend that, uh, uh, take their bicycle with the pickup truck dropped off at the, uh, parking lot that will, uh, uh, interfere with your golf game because it, it, it intertwines with your route and the given routes of the different jumps and riding trails. Uh, there needs to be some way of, uh, having some etiquette or some order between the two groups because there will be conflict. I am concerned about what I've seen so far, that you've had, uh, many of these golf holes on the Palolo side, which is basically north and east of that ridge. Uh, that when you throw your disc, it will go over the edge sometimes. And we know that it happens. It is a fairly precarious and dangerous, uh, edge to the top of the hill. So my concern is again, uh, the conflict with the bicyclists, jumpers, riders from the top to the bottom. And a, a, a set of etiquette that is published and understood between the golfers themselves of how you start the game between the nine holes or the 18 holes. Uh, the conflict that will be occurring with, uh, those neighbors that are next to, uh, the south border of your golf course. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
What I would say to that is that the current place that, uh, that I see disc golfers playing now would not be the area we would be using. Right now they are actually playing up in the area where the picnicers and all that are on days when it's very low use. And, and that's why we were proposing a course that's below the road, uh, in this underutilized area. But I do understand his concern about, you know, uh, overlap with the riders and, um, and other park users. And that's why when I put that, I'll bring that map back up just to show you guys. Give me a second here. I don't think I'm still sharing it, right? Let me share that one more time. Sorry. So he's talking about way up here where the, the, where they play today. And our whole proposal was to move that down in this area. But we have been working and talking with the mountain bikers to get their input and that's another reason why we came up with this particular layout. And if you notice, most of these, most of these holes are avoiding the walking trails so that people can still come through here. What you can't see in this picture is the elevation changes. There's some big elevation changes here, which makes throwing over this lower trail right here not much of an issue. The main trail that goes all the way down the hill that most of the bikers are riding is this one. So we're not even, we're not even connecting with most of them. True, they do have some things down here that we may have to deal with, jumps and whatnot. Um, but again, we're trying to work with, with Deal and R and the community to make this work for everybody. Um, we're not putting in things like Rogue and, and trying to just do whatever we want. We're trying to work with the community and make this work. And, you know, we'll deal with the, any concerns that the community has. Excuse me, for, you know, whatever that is. In terms of, you know, damage to, to, to fauna and stuff up there. For the most part, we're going to be in an area that's not going to be touching a lot of the things like that.
Did you put your map back up?
Sure. Sorry.
Yeah, I think someone here in the audience wants to take a picture of your map.
Sure. Just a second. Give me just a second. There we go.
Terrific.
So I also, I don't know if I mentioned it, but I, I spoke with Representative Jackson Sayama a couple of years ago about this and what he told me was to come up with a, um, a solution, a map, a, a course design that actually takes into consider all these trails. That's what he wanted to see. We've actually given that to him. Now I'm waiting some input from him. But that's kind of how we designed this. And that's not to say we can't still modify it, right? To, to make it even better. But this was our first crack at it, so to speak.
I will have to agree that you have picked, uh, places that are not that frequented by hikers. Most of the hikers go up the trail of the driveway and they continue to go up towards the, uh, the, the construction sites of the cable. And down towards, uh, the, the Ka'ah, Ka'ah of Crater over to Manoa Falls. But there is still a lot of travel still along that bike path as the main trail down the hill, as you call it. But there's still people there.
Oh yeah. And we avoid that completely.
As I said, I think the setup of the etiquette between the non-golfers and the golfers has to be established well. Because there will be some trespassing into other people's territories. Both the hikers, the walkers through there versus the, uh, the golfers. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, um, I think you can close the map now there. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Um, so we'll go back to, um, members of the public online. Daisy Marai.
Hey, thank you Chair. Um, actually I have two of those plastic metal, um, plastic discs that are like frisbees. I actually have two of them. And I've seen and heard how loud it is. Once you throw the, uh, frisbees into the pole that catches it with the, uh, metal wires, it's very loud. And don't forget, you're in a residential area. And is the land, um, made for preservation for parks or is it for, um, commercialism or what? Because this is really touching so close to people's homes. And if you notice that some of the, um, poles, you have to go across the trail in order for it to hit the pole. And you're going to come across people that are unaware and all of a sudden you're going to have accidents happening. So I mean, this is not a very, um, well, it's good in the sense of recreational purposes, but I don't think it's a safe thing to have here. Cause who knows? Because we open during all park hours, you may have lots of people once they hear how great it is. And then they're going to be fighting for parking, going to people's, um, yards to park illegally. And then you're going to have conflicts because it doesn't seem to be a safe sport in this area. I suggest another area that has a little bit more open space. Because, um, I've heard how loud it can get. Once you try to get the metal, um, the plastic disc into the hanging chains. The question is, what happens when it goes astray, awry? And then you see a walker passing by or bicyclists, they can get hurt. You have kids all over the area. So this is not the right place for it. Thank you.
Okay, um, Laura Ruby?
Yeah, just a few, adding on to a few things that have already been said. About the discs that kind of escape and they go into the residential area or the discs that cross passes, pass of people that are just out walking around. Uh, and, um, on the, uh, Big Island, Hamakua, um, Country Club, they have golf course areas that you have to actually, uh, tee and cross over others. And they have to yell out and they have to make some, uh, motion to why they're, uh, and it's going to interfere with other people. It's a courtesy kind of thing. But maybe these people are caught up in their disc game and they won't see that. Um, so it's, um, it's kind of like overloading a number of activities in one, um, smaller area. Thank you.
Okay, uh, board members online, Winston?
Uh, yeah, thank you for coming and giving a presentation today. Um, it, it seems like a fun game and, um, I can see advantage of, uh, you know, people enjoy this. Uh, I just wanted to, um, wonder about the, the, does the, is the mission of the, this park to have these sort of active activities? I mean, that would be a first question. It sounds like they, they've said, yeah, this is not, we don't have a problem with it. But as I'm looking at it, I, what, um, the resident Daisy Marai said was, you've got some of these lines going straight across walking paths. And I don't know how densely, uh, forested these particular areas are. But I can imagine it probably hurts getting bonked in the head if you just come around a corner and you know, you're trying to set up your shot and you want to get it right in. Um, it, I, I also see you want to be close to the parking lot, but, um, as you're going through this, I suppose you mentioned like the idea is to have sort of trees and shrubs and, and obstacles to go around, but it looks like there's going to be a need for entirely different paths to be created at each of these um, fairways or, or, you know, it's, it's really sort of like, uh, I mean, as, as a golf course has a cleared space. Do you envision that these spaces need to be cleared? And maybe you might.
Yes. Chair White, uh, Secretary Boidel raising a point of order. Chair White, so.
Uh, what, what was that?
I'm raising a point of order.
Uh, sure, go ahead.
My point is the following oral testimony rule, which the board adopted in July. Two minutes will be allowed for oral testimony, but after two times speaking in one meeting, the time limit for that person is 30 seconds for each discussion item in the remainder of that meeting, except for open forum. And the, the speaker has gone over a minute and a half. So way over 30 seconds at this point and has spoken on, uh, two earlier, uh, discussion items.
All right, noted.
In the boardroom, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The board member was asking relevant questions to this very serious matter that could impact a whole community, either positively or negatively. I think it is very improper for some board member to willy-nilly interrupt a proceeding like this based on his personal preferences and an old, uh, an old policy that really is outdated. Thank you.
Well, I, I appreciate, uh, you know, the desire to be brief, uh, Secretary Boidel. I, I, these are some serious issues. I think that you probably all want to address beforehand. You may want to look at recharting some of these spaces to avoid that. But I am interested in, do these need new fairways, in fact, of cleared shrubs here? Or how, or do people sort of tramp through in between the, the walking paths? Um, and have you looked at, uh, Sand Island?
Chair White, so. Did you follow my point of order?
Um, I agree with your point of order. So I would ask, um, I mean, it can be called an archaic rule, but it still does exist. So, um, if we could just, um, ask to, um, Mr. Welch, if you can just summarize.
If you, you have, you get the gist of it. And, uh, so, and maybe other members might have similar concerns. Thank you.
Respond to that? I'm sorry.
Yes, 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 you can, you can respond, uh, Mr. Borski.
Uh, you know, it's, it's a new sport to a lot of you guys, so you, you probably don't understand it as much, but with disc golf, you really want that, that rough through the middle. But you are right. You do have to make some clearing at least so that you can throw from a tee down what you could call a fairway. But I mean, if you see some of the, the narrow things that people throw through now, you'd be surprised that that's even possible, but they do. A lot of the stuff that's down in that area is invasive guava and we wouldn't be clearing all of it, but we would be clearing a little bit to make a path down through those, those areas that you call, and that we would call fairways. It's also, um, I, I don't know if any of you have been down there, but there's a lot of like leaning trees that are dangerous that, you know, I would recommend to Deal and R that if some of those are, are removed because they're, they're hazard, not just to us, but even to the people walking through there and bikers. There's not much, uh, cleanup or anything that goes on down there and it's, it's a little bit on the wild side. But we're, you know, we think it's actually a great spot for disc golf. If you're familiar with the sport, these are the kind of places that really work well. And, you know, at some point, if, if some of you would like to walk through the area, I, I, we'd love to walk you through there and show you exactly what we're talking about.
All right. Well, seeing no other hands raised or, okay. Uh, Noella?
Yes, um, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Borski. Thank you for your presentation, sir. Um, it's an interesting sport. Uh, the islands right now are, uh, dealing with the pickleball and now this is a new introduction to me. Uh, with that said, I will say that, um, I think that on the island of Oahu, there are so many other places that you could do on the east end versus this place. You may or may not know, sir, and I would hope that you do your research, but you know, there's a lot of invasive species up there, which is true. Um, that, but there's also a lot of indigenous things, plants and the birds that we're losing a lot of our native Hawaiian birds and species. I for one know that, um, when we go look for mili, it's very hard to find and it's very easy to miss. Um, and you have to have a sharp eye. That's just one minute example. But there's a lot of things up there. And I, I personally don't think that I would go through that park knowing that I could get beaned in the head with a frisbee. Um, and I say that with respect to you. Um, at, and it's, it's a walking park, Mr. Borski. It's a, a park for bikers and if we start filling it in with all sorts of things and granted, this is a fun sport. It looks like it is. But I don't think this is the area. People want to go up there and just have their quiet time. It's a place of refuge for many of us islanders. I, I'm assuming you are an islander, but um, I would ask all due respect that you truly consider what, uh, some of the people here are saying. There are so many other places that would really benefit from this, but not this one, sir. And with that said, once again, thank you for your presentation. Uh, but do remember there's lots of indigenous plants and birds and animals that live up there. There's, there's always the chance in closing because it's happened to me on a hiking trail where of, uh, one of the wild pigs will come charging out of there and because they're coming lower off the slopes for food. I don't know if you took that into consideration, but until you are being attacked or you see one coming your way, which has personally happened to me, it is not a safe situation. Even the bikers and walkers know that, sir. So thank you very, very much.
Uh, Jeff Hawkins?
Uh, hi, yeah. Um, are you taking comments from the public on this?
Yes, we'll take another comment from the public.
Okay, um, I know the area he's talking about. Uh, I'm a father and I live in. Uh, I'm a father and I live in the area and I take my 10-year-old son up there. Um, that lower area, from what I've seen, um, we run into a lot of houseless people. We've run into big piles of trash, even like syringes from drug use. Um, last time I was there, a homeless person kind of like threatened us in a way, and I even called the L and R. I would love to see this area used for something better than nothing. Um, it just seems like it's overran by a lot of bad elements and this seems like a real opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Now, seeing, uh, no other hands. You have your, uh, public and board commentary, uh, Mr. Borski. And, um, you know, we'd love to stay in touch with you as you, uh, I guess, work on what you need to with, um, the comments that were submitted to you tonight.
Great, thank you.
Um, so I had on here Board Business, um, City Complete Streets. It was, um, recommended to me by, um, the Chair of, uh, Traffic and Public Safety, that we defer this item, um, until she can have it in her committee. But if there is anyone, um, from the public tonight only, since it is listed on the agenda, um, who would like to comment on this item, uh, just to be fair. Um, if not, we will move this until, um, it can be put into committee. And I see Laura Ruby.
Yeah, very, very quickly, and I know a lot of other people on this board are really opposed to the complete street bikeway on, uh, Alaway Boulevard. And it was very interesting that the town hall, the mayor actually said he was very concerned. It sounds like he doesn't want it either. What is, uh, my concern is that people, uh, people on the, uh, Alaway watershed and the complete streets and the Natsopono Bridge are not talking to each other. And there's going to be a huge jam up, a big knot, uh, wherever that, those three come together. And I just think that it's very unwise and it will take away a lane of, uh, traffic. Thank you.
Okay, any other public testimony on this? Seeing none, so, um, Margaret can, uh, put this in her committee. Up next, item eight, elected officials, Council Chair Tommy Waters.
Good evening, everybody. Amanda Cepeda here on behalf of Chair Waters. Um, I put our link to our April newsletter in the chat. If anyone is interested in that, lots of good information, um, not only on updates, uh, you know, things we've got going on at the council and community, as well as some important numbers. Um, somebody earlier asked, I believe it was Laura Ruby, for the number for streetlight repairs. I went ahead and put that in the chat as well. That's something that we include in our monthly, um, report newsletter, along with many other important, um, numbers that you may need at some point. So, so please do take a look at that. I have a few updates from issues that we discussed last month. Um, I wanted to report that there was an enforcement, um, just completed earlier this month on the fifth. Department of Facility Maintenance, along with, um, HPD and Department of Parks, conducted an enforcement and a cleanup of Kui Lake Cliffs, which included the lookouts on Diamond Head Road. Um, the homelika's encampments were addressed by mini placing team and there was a large amount of trash and debris that was removed. The second, um, item I wanted to mention was the scheduling of the Kapilani Park trustee meeting on May 25th, Tuesday at 1:00 PM. I know that's something that's been asked about a number of times as well. Um, third item I have is, uh, we received several complaints about ongoing activity, um, homeless activity in Paki Park. Um, I guess it had been ongoing for some time. It just recently, pretty recently came to our attention. We did follow up with HPD. On that, we received a report back that the bicycle and ATV officers conducted an operation in Paki Park, which resulted in two individuals being arrested and with the removal of over a hundred pounds of trash. Um, there were several criminal citations issued for camp, camping and park bill violations. Um, and officers will can continue to make daily and nightly checks. Um, I believe, if I recall, there was actually two outstanding warrants for two individuals. Um, one of which is going to be extradited out of, out of state. The fourth item I have is Diamond Head Road overgrowth. I know that's been discussed, um, and mentioned several times. And Department of Parks is working on, um, doing some trimming and cleanup on their side of things. Um, State DLR is supposed to be working on maintenance on their side. Um, and I know there's been some discussion about, um, the ongoing discussion about the Kiabe and other regis-tation, um, there that's ongoing. Um, the, the last item I wanted to mention was we talked about the mopeds in Makale Beach Park becoming an issue. Um, officers conducted enforcement in April, gave several multiple verbal warnings, issued a citation. Officers will continue to monitor and take appropriate action when violations are observed. And the Department of Parks and Recreation will be installing specific new signage stating no vehicles allowed at the entrance to the park to notify the public of the rules. Um, and they'll continue to monitor the park area for, for that issue as well. Um, with that, I'm happy to take back any questions or concerns anyone may have.
Uh, anyone in the public here? Seeing none, public online, uh, Daisy?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Amanda. What is the status of, um, council and some of the mayor, et cetera, gain pay raises? How is that bill going about? And what is the funding? Where is the funding coming from? I hope it's not our property taxes, because I know they're working on it right now. But, um, question of a lot of people is, where is the funding for all these raises coming from? And what is the status of the bill? Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I'm happy to take that back. I actually don't know. I'm so sorry. I probably should know that, but I don't, so I'll have to defer to, um, our policy person. Um, I will get back to you on that for sure. Currently, there's been no decisions made. Um, I know that Chair Waters, as well as several of the other council members, um, are just taking, you know, taking a hard look at a lot of the feedback that's coming through. Um, I'm sure you folks know that there were reports put out by the Salary Commission. There's a lot of information to go through and of course, we're hearing from the public as we, we appreciate always. Um, so no decisions have been made as far as I'm aware of. Um, you know, we continue to, to take comments from, and anywhere and everywhere. And so, um, that's Chair's position at this point, as far as I'm aware of. You know, no decisions have been made until all the comments have come through.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
All right, Noella?
Um, good evening, Amanda. Thank you so much for the report. Uh, thank you very much for taking note of the moped situation. It is getting worse. Um, it, uh, I went to a function this evening and somebody actually came up to me and said, um, I was down there the other day and there were, you know, over 50 bikes down there. So, thank you for being all over that because we really need it, um, also unleashed dogs. And then lastly, um, I was wondering, would, um, Mr. Waters, Councilman Waters, would he be willing to have a, a local neighborhood town hall with the residents of his district here? You know, he can break it up. His district is very large, but he could break it up. I know it's hard for him to show up for these meetings, so he sends you, which is very cool. Uh, but also, um, i- if we could see him, you know, during his, uh, time, uh, in a town hall, I, I, I kind of think that would be good. Uh, but anyway, once again, thank you for the good job ongoing that you're doing for Makale Beach Park. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you for that. And, um, you know, Chair, he actually really enjoys coming to these meetings. You know, it's not always easy for him to make it to all of them. We have so many, um, not only neighborhood boards, but other evening, community and other meetings as well. So, he does try to get to as many as he possibly can. We absolutely have had town hall meetings in various neighborhoods in our district. We do intend to have more. This time of year, you know, budget season is a little bit of a, a time crunch and a schedule crunch, um, for city council and especially for the chair. But I know, you know, that once budget is over, he has a list of, of, uh, priorities and definitely town halls is one of them. So, thank you for that.
All right, board members in person? Seeing none, board members online, Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not want this counting against my time on other issues. I would like to thank Amanda very much for her excellent news that, uh, Makale Beach Park mopeds are, uh, being, uh, watched and, and controlled and there will be signs posted. Also, I would like to share a report, uh, that the Diamond Head State Monument Foundation has been working closely with state parks, uh, which has just, uh, uh, confirmed they have a contractor to remove the dead Nalpaka, which died as a result of their, of state parks shutting off the irrigation system a year ago. And they are now going to remove. They are now going to remove.
This is Secretary Boidel raising a point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Secretary Boidel.
Thank you. The speaker's 30 seconds expired 30 seconds ago.
Yes, Michelle, if you can summarize, please.
Thank you. I'm making a report and it, it, uh, is just another, uh, small amount. Uh, the contractor has been hired to remove the dead Nalpaka and the, uh, the plan is to install a better inter-irrigation system, completely controlled by state parks and also indigenous plants to complete the scenic byway as it was designated in 2013. Thank you.
Okay, I see, uh, Linda? Lindo Wong, board member?
Hello, Linda?
Uh, you have to unmute.
Okay, now am I unmuted?
Uh, yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm having a real hard time with the WebEx. That's why I was absent the last meeting. I couldn't sign on. I tried the whole time. Is there any help for us, uh, that have a hard time with the WebEx? I know other board members are having a hard time also.
Um, you can contact the neighborhood assistant and I'm sure he'd be glad to help you.
Okay, uh, considering, um, what Amanda was saying, uh, about Chair Waters and the, um, uh, raise in, uh, salaries. I was a state worker for 24 years and we barely got 3% or 5%. And to give a raise to, um, the top people in the city government of 64%, I think is out of whack. The, um, if they want to pretend or they're considering that they're full-time workers, well, then maybe they need to declare themselves to be full-time workers before taking the 64% raise. Making raise.
There was never any declaration that they were part-time workers.
Okay, I'm just asking. I'm just discussing.
No, and that's a good point and it's something that's come up over and over again. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. Um, and I don't pretend to be an expert on all of it, certainly. Um, but it's not in the charter. Um, it's really nowhere, um, that the council members are considered part-time. They are allowed to have outside employment, just like any other city worker, just like I'm allowed to, even though I'm a full-time employee. Um, so I think there's a lot more to understand there.
About a 64% pay raise?
Well, the 64% pay raise, just, just kind of understand that didn't come from the city council. That's the Salary Commission's job.
Whose was it? Salary Commission?
The Salary Commission's job is to come up and with the determination and a recommendation for an increase. And there was a lot of time and effort spent, um, doing research to support, you know, their, their decision at the end of the day.
I, I just feel that it's excessive and I think a lot of other people do, according to the newspaper articles. Um, also, um, I'm, I like the idea of, uh, Chair Waters doing a, a town hall. Um, I went to the mayor's town hall and it was great. It was very open, positive, um, educated and all kinds of positive things. And I, I would, um, salute that and welcome it also, since we don't get to see him very much.
Great, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
All right, um, Bruce, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Uh, uh, thank you, Amanda, for coming to our meeting. But again, I, I want to discuss, uh, property taxes have come up. And I believe if there's one thing that we do in this county, in this neighborhood board is to address this, you know, some kind of property tax relief for those of us who reside in permanent residence in our area. In fact, this should, this should be for all of the Wahoo residents that have permanent residence, that reside in their homes, but are currently being taxed at a higher rate. And I, I, I think that's wrong. And we're being thrown into a pot with all the other money coming into the state and driving our property values up and we've been taxed at a higher rate. Our property tax, for those of us that have bought homes and reside here, should be based on the value that we paid for our properties. And so something needs to be done, if we do anything in this neighborhood board, is to address this system that is incorrect and not fair to us homeowners. But can, um, Tommy Waters look into this?
Yes, thank you, Board Member Wong. You know, this, um, the issue of long-term property tax relief is, uh, Chair's priority right now. And I don't know if you're following what's happening at the city council. They recently, um, established a permitted enter, uh, a pig, a permitted enter, to group, um, to discuss this very issue, um, of tax relief. And so there's, um, off the top of my head, I believe it's over 30 different measures that they're taking a look at and, and diving into to see, you know, what would work best and, and different ways of providing property tax relief for, for, for everyone, for different, um, groups. And so again, that's something that they're taking a real hard look at, are taking it very seriously. It's definitely a priority. And so we would just encourage you to follow along those meetings and those discussions and to definitely provide your feedback as well, because that's what they're looking for.
Thank you. Because you know what, what I don't want to see is 30 years from now, my grandchildren being taxed out of, taxed out of the home that they'll take over when I, when I pass away. And so I hope they live here for perpetuity and that's the purpose.
We hope so too, absolutely.
Thank you.
Michelle, did you have a final brief comment?
I'm sorry, I forgot to lower my hand.
Okay.
And please don't count, count my comment toward my minutes. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, um, up next on the agenda, Council Member Calvin Say's office or, uh, Council Member himself. Is there anyone from his office here tonight?
Yeah, this is Chanel with Council Member Say's office. Mavi is going to put our links in the chat. Um, he is currently in the, um, regularly scheduled Makiki Neighborhood Board meeting. So, he apologized for not being able to attend tonight. Um, we did, uh, Amanda just brought it up. Um, but we have the real property tax measures that our council support services put together as a website. So you can go through all of the measures that are being considered at this time. And just wanted to, um, remind everybody, we are still going through the budget process. Our next, um, and final look at the budget will be on June 7th. That's going to be our third reading. So those are the, that's the final time that council will, um, review and do. Um, review and do amendments for it. Um, we also are putting in our newsletter and our city auditor came out with our city. Citizen-centric report for two thousand and twenty-two, so it just gives some details on what the city's been up up to. Um, and then. Just one, one item on the Date Street burnt house. Um, that that one is ongoing. I think they are, the DPP um did report that there's multiple notice of violations. And um are now doing a property lien on it um and further action is forthcoming, but happy to take back any questions.
Uh, anyone in the audience now, uh, board members here in person? Seeing none, uh, public members, Laura Ruby.
Uh, hello, Melvia and um Janelle. Um, listen, um, Calvin Say has been behind these developments, the Kui Le Place. And the bridge over the canal. Um, he needs to point out fifty years in the future, all of our taxpayer dollars. That are gonna have to go to police, security, uh, park closing, uh, expansion of um comfort stations. All of those things. And the second thing he has to do, and it has to do soon before anything is built over, is to establish. Um, king permits for residents. In other words, you pay a certain amount and your car can be parked on the street and not be ticketed. What we're gonna have is a huge in, uh, we don't have any parking at all in the neighborhood right now. And it will be a huge overload if that Kui Le Place has two cars in the family and they're gonna try to squeeze in with us. So we want to have that proactive, so we will expect at the next meeting that uh council members say we'll have two plans. One for what it looked like to the taxpayers fifty years out for all of the.
Order, Chair Whitson.
And the second, and the second is.
Yes, Secretary Boedel.
They uh.
Speaker's thirty seconds expired.
Let me finish, okay, establish the parking program, okay, thank you.
Uh, ju- just uh for the clarification for me, um, uh, secretary, I I'm a little bit more open to letting the public speak. It's. But for board members, I understand where you're coming from. Even even if sometimes it is a lot. Um, okay, are there any hands raised for anyone else from the public? Um, any board members online? Seeing none, um, thank you. Um, up next, Representative Bertrand Kobayashi or his office? Um, seeing or hearing none, Representative Jackson Sayama or his office?
Hi, um, this is Evelyn Hee. I'm the staff for Representative Jackson Sayama. She apologizes for not attending tonight. He's off island at this time. Um, if there's any, and I'm happy to take back any questions or concerns.
Anyone in the audience? No? Any board members here in person? No? Members of the public online? Uh, Daisy?
All right, thank you, Chair. Evelyn, I just wanna make sure that uh Representative Sayama is up to date regarding the um. Basically like just throwing um activity on White Hill Ridge, because there's a lot of concerns and he needs to really. Be on top of it because it concerns the residents, so I hope that he's a little bit more um into this particular. Issue and studies it more, because it seems to be a little different from what he was originally told two years ago. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment and uh he did receive the presentation and uh is aware of what is going on. So I'm sure he will, if you have any questions directly to him on that, um, I'm sure he would be um happy to respond to you.
Uh, Noella?
Uh, yes, thank you for um for Evelyn. Um, would he be willing to do a town hall? In the interim, I I think what the people want is people just want to know these people and see them walking amongst the. The the neighbors, um, the the town halls are working and and I strongly um. Feel as though he would really benefit getting to know all of us folks, so.
Sure.
Yeah, you know, anyway, so just, you know, Hawaiian style, we we, it's it's. Beautifully evident to me that we are all coming together and I thank each and every one of you. Um, so, you know, he can do his town hall with the neighbors, you know, break up his little neighborhoods, let. You know, and and it's it's just um grassroots, so thank you so much for allowing me to comment.
Thank you for that suggestion. I'll make sure that he uh gets that.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? Uh, I am going to metaphorically pass the gavel to the Vice Chair Winston Welch, because I just have a a question if it can be taken back to the representative. Um, my question is, last year I had requested a um. Piece of legislation um be put into the legislature for consideration um from another representative. Um, and it and it was picked up, it was brought to committee and it ended up dying. And that was a bill that would allow for the option to have virtual meetings. Since that time and some of the opposition that came out against the bill was relating to the fact that. People like Kupuna and other maybe underserved people wouldn't be able to have access to the meetings if they were virtual. Since that time, nobody shows up to our meetings. Um, and the majority of people who do, including the representatives themselves and their staff and everyone, all get to, all get to stay home and. Webex in while I have to go and figure out how to arrange a meeting and get a cameraman and all this stuff to sit in an empty room. Um, so I was wondering if the representative um would be willing to support maybe. Next legislative session, the ability for us to also have virtual meetings.
Referring, are you referring to hearings that virtually, virtual hearings?
Well, right, right now, we can only have in-person meetings or these kind of hybrid meetings, because the sunshine law requires that you have a physical location if you have a virtual meeting. Um, what I would be asking for is a third option to allow solely virtual meetings, just as an option if that's what an organization or board or group wanted to do.
Okay, um. Would, okay, I I'll take that back to him. I'll take that question back to him.
Thank you. Um, I see Linda.
You did, I'm unmuted, okay, thank you. Uh, thank you. I was going to ask, I guess this is a good spot, is any um. Concerning the meetings, I I I really feel that it's unpleasant or it's not respectful. For especially the board members to hi- not be visually present during the meeting. We're already in a um. Virtual meeting, we're, you know, we're not physically there, but since we're elected, I think the uh public deserves to be able to see us. And the same goes with the representatives for the elected officials and the elected officials. I I really think that uh maybe at least during their presentations or something that uh. Those of us that are board members and elected uh people in the um officials category. They they should be able to be seen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any final comments? Seeing none, thank you very much. Um, up up next, uh, Senator Stanley Chang or his office?
Hi, my name is Ariel. I am here on behalf of the Office of Senator Chang. Um, this month, I'd like to share our May newsletter in the chat. Um. Find some interesting content on there and um we also hosted a webinar with Sheena Watt. He's an Australian politician. She served in the Victorian Legislative Council since two thousand and twenty. And you can view the recording for that webinar. Um, through the link that I also just put in the chat. For our legislative update, um, the session came to a close a few weeks ago. Um. In a bit of excitement, we um Senator Chang introduced and um passed SB eight six five, which is. It's Aloha Homes Pilot Program, um, which makes low-costly sold condos available for Hawaii state residents. Um, we also worked with the Committee on Health and Human Services to pass SB eight nine eight, which expands the state rent supplement program for Kupuna who are homeless. Um, and then we worked with the House um to pass a number of housing bills, um. Including one that authorizes the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation to establish a five-year dwelling. Unit revolving fund equity pilot program. And um another that establishes a supportive housing pilot program in the Office of Homelessness and Housing Solutions. Um. The Diamond Head State Monument also received through CIP funds nearly two hu- two million. Dollars over the next two fiscal years for improvement of facilities. Um, the repair of the Kala Tunnel and um other accessibility measures. And I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions in the audience? Seeing none from board members here in person? Seeing none, uh, members of the community online? Seeing none, uh, Linda, did you have a question or comment?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, um, the only thing for me is just the same question I asked to Representative Sayama, um, just to reiterate. If Senator Chang would consider legislation that would allow for solely virtual meetings?
Okay, noted, thank you.
Um. Senator Les Yihara emailed me um in the afternoon and he said unfortunately he would not be able to attend. And I don't believe there's anyone from his office here. Okay, item nine, approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes for Thursday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Thursday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we'll start with the first one, Thursday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Chair?
Yes, uh, Secretary Boedel.
I'd like to move to. Adopt all three months of. February, March, and April minutes as published on the NCO website and sent out by the NCO.
Okay, so it has been moved by Secretary Boedel to adopt all three sets of minutes, February. Ninth, uh, March ninth, and Thursday, April thirteenth, as written on the NCO website and what were sent out in the mailouts. Uh, is there a second to that motion?
Our second motion?
Uh, Board Member Allen seconds, um, discussion. Uh, Michelle, yes?
Yes, I think all the board members have received the uh thoroughly reviewed minutes. I believe uh our secretary is lacking in that area. Uh, for uh the reflection of the uh true uh. And substantive matters of the meeting. Uh, the corrections were more abundant in uh February and March, but we have a new. Neighborhood assistant who is uh extremely qualified and more attentive. To uh the details of the meeting and is far more compliant with chapter ninety-two. Section nine regarding uh complete and accurate minutes for board records. The reason we need to have these. Accurate records is not only for the less tech-savvy constituents, the senior members of our community. Who do not go online to check out uh the uh extensive. Meeting recording of three hours, but have a way to understand the intent, the meeting. Meaning of the issues before the board at our meetings through accurate minutes. Therefore, I went to the trouble of analyzing the uh sketchy minutes, which are not compliant with the statute. Uh, for uh uh. Uh, February, March, and also April's minutes, as we are now taking them collectively. Uh, and I have forwarded the missing information to the board members. If board members do not feel that minutes are worth future reference. Uh, for the larger public to understand why we took positions and uh the discussion.
Michelle, can can you please summarize?
Positions in a reflective format, not a um word-for-word format. Then the board members should defer to those who believe and act on the importance of the minutes. As reference documents and with respect to our seniors.
Thank you, Michelle.
Therefore, I object to this motion and after this motion is disposed of, I will make a motion. To accept the corrected minutes that have been distributed to our board members with great respect, respect and diligence. Thank you.
Winston?
Uh, yes, Chair, I just wanted to share um uh something on the screen, if I might, and it's uh. It's basically uh showing us how these um. Uh, meeting minutes are really grossly inadequate and incorrect as they are currently posted, and I think all of the board members did receive. Some corrected uh meeting minutes, uh, but i- if those, if you, if you haven't, you can see there, there's one thing that exactly for me, it says. In the February meeting minutes, in the middle of it, it says Welch advocated for comment or uh. Uh, Welch proposed banning foreigners from purchasing property to control property taxes. This was wildly inaccurate and incorrect. In fact, the corrected meeting minutes that you all got earlier today and that were from Michelle Matson. Is correct, which states Welch referenced real-time news articles reporting on ten to twelve states banning or restricting property purchases by certain foreign interests. And reported that Kui Le Place was featured in a full-page ad promoting marketing of the developments residential units just days after the city council approved their development application. Now, this is one example, one out of the, out of the pages of notes and corrections that you got. If we were to pass the meeting minutes as they currently are, not only are they, they're incorrect, they're insubstantial, they don't. Address what the, what we talked about, but it's, it's just patently false information. Uh, I didn't, I didn't suggest this, but not just what I am talking about or had to say, it's throughout the entirety of these meeting minutes. That you have a corrected version before you, I would move that we uh reject the adoption of the meeting minutes as they are posted and accept. The meeting minutes as they have been rewritten carefully, thoughtfully, and completely by Michelle Matson. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments on this matter? Uh, Secretary Boedel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would accept corrections of errors in the minutes. But I I've looked through the um, the alternate. Uh, with corrections and additions that we received and there's pages and pages of additional details. And arbitrary changes in the writing style and there's re-characterizations and explanations of things that. Were actually said or didn't actually happen in the. In the meeting, um, for example, um, on the. The latest one, um. The, the changes are for the the motion to support. the changes are for the, the motion to support the director of the aquarium. So the minutes that the NCO sent out said that the motion was to support Andrew Rossiter's aquarium director efforts to protect the aquarium's property, period. And I went back, um, today, since we just got it a couple hours before the meeting. And I, I checked the video and we went over it like exactly what the motion was, like five times during that meeting. And it was very clearly at the end um, that what was in the minutes. And now in the proposed correction, it says Mattson moved to emergency second to support aquarium director and Rossiter's efforts to properly protect the aquarium's property under the state's executive order to the UH and the city's zoning requirements. That was not what we voted on. Um, and it's shown in the, the video. And there's just so many changes, um, that, you know, I, I can't go over all of them um, and check every one, but if there is some, you know, limited, if there's like changes that are actually errors that are actually corrections, um, I would, you know, be more acceptable of that, but not the wholesale rewriting of them. So I would um, support passing them as the NCO sent them out. Thank you.
All right, we'll do a final comments, Winston.
Yes, sorry, Chair, thank you. If we have serious concerns about these where they're just absolutely factually inaccurate, then perhaps it would be best for us to work with Secretary Boidel to hammer out a a, uh, these meeting minutes that, uh, he would find acceptable that we, um, obviously need time to, to work on because something is that are just the gross errors. We don't have time to go through every single page and minute because that will lead to a lot of, uh, nonsense. But I would propose that perhaps we put these off until another meeting and Secretary Boidel has an opportunity to look at the uh, the revisions and see what it is that he has objection to because these meeting minutes do reflect the, the rewritten ones, reflect the, the current nuance and importance of our meetings that we.
Winston, did you write these minutes or was it Michelle?
It was Michelle, but I.
But, but you agree with what she wrote?
I do agree with what she wrote.
So I guess my, my question is if Secretary Boidel, if I take him on good faith, he's saying that he went and watched the video and he verb, if, if he verb, if he looked at it and he took the motion that was made verbatim. And then now he's saying the new minutes have a completely different motion. Do you know why that is the case?
So in that, in that instance, and if there's those instances, we could look at those, but for the rest of it, where we have hundred percent factually inaccurate things like what I said, why that wasn't caught by Secretary Boidel is is concerning. And so if there, if he has some concerns that, that have been, that he may have, but they're definite concerns on the other side, we, we need to sit down and look at these and say, how do we give a complete and accurate um, just factual, basic factual meeting minutes? And I don't think that we have, uh, that in what has been presented. But if we had to err on any side, that would be with Michelle's, uh, corrected and complete and extensive meeting minutes.
I think my concern at this point is we use the word extensive to mean written longer, but that also now means that they're all loaded.
I think they are complete, correct, and accurate, and any person taking meeting minutes will have obviously a point of view, which is why we've, we've asked for better trained and more extensive meeting minutes from the neighborhood assistants. Uh, and that is because you have then, um, you know, thirty neighborhood boards with their own levels of, of quality. Now Michelle produces, I think, excellent meeting minutes. And anyone that would compare these side by side, it would be I would find it hard pressed to believe that Michelle's meeting minutes are not superior in every way to what the ones that were posted, uh, on the website.
But I, I think for me, my position wasn't whether or not they're superior. Michelle's a good writer. I'm not questioning that. It's just the it's, it's like we're talking about tossing out one set of something for something else that may not be accurate. So I, I, for my own personal comment, I would agree with maybe taking a second look, but I will let Michelle weigh in on this. Do you have an additional follow up comment, Michelle?
Yes, I'm sorry, the mute was on. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, for being so respectful. Uh, to try to calm this conversation down and eliminate the innuendos. Uh, there is no loading of any minutes. The minutes were, uh, a reflection as required in the statute of the substance of the meeting and the views of the participants. We did not get all of that, especially in February and March. It was much better in April. Uh, the so-called secretary is picking and choosing. He is not looking at the discussion and the final mo.
Well, we're not, Michelle, I like, we're trying to do this without being disparaging.
The facts of the, what is on the recording and you put those facts together and this is exactly what I did with the final motion, but that's just one issue. I think that Winston is absolutely correct as Vice Chair, and I'm sure you would agree that this has been a major problem of, since way before you were Chair, um, uh, and, uh, we now have the Neighborhood Commission Office actually complying with the statute, which they were not before. Uh, and I believe that you are lending stability to that. Uh, so I agree of that, uh, because of Secretary, so-called Secretary Boidel's dispute of, uh, 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 comments that we should postpone these until we can have a meeting of the minds on the reasonableness and the necessity of the meeting minutes as a true reflection, accurate and complete reflection of our meetings for not only future reference for our board members and the larger public, but for our senior citizens who only rely on written minutes. And, uh, I, I defer to your, uh, your, um, your, uh, decision, well, I.
I see Linda's hand. Wasn't sure if she had a question or what she left in the comment was okay. You're on mute, Linda. We, we can't hear you, Linda. Well, we saw your comment, uh, in the chat, Linda. Uh, Secretary Boidel, final comment?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that I don't want to get into correcting the corrections. I think it would be like a never ending.
Yeah.
Thing. I don't think we could really.
So we'll take up, we'll take up the motion. It's been mo- it's been moved and seconded. We'll, we'll take it up now. And if it doesn't pass, I think we all can agree, we will defer this and take a second look at it. But we have to take a, a vote on the original motion and the second. And if it's not a problem with anyone else, we'll defer it if this doesn't pass. All right, the motion on the table is to approve the minutes from February, March, and April of twenty twenty-three as produced by the Neighborhood Commission Office on the website. Alan?
Hi.
Hasina?
Hi.
Merchi?
No.
Narita? Narita, are you there? All right, Bruce Wong?
Hi.
Oh, that was Narita, thank you.
Hi.
All right.
Uh, defer.
Sorry, uh, Bruce Wong, that's an abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Boidel?
Hi.
Murakawa? Welch?
Absolutely not.
Velasco?
Hi.
Mattson?
Absolutely not.
All right. Persons?
No.
Saint Dennis?
Hi.
Linda Wong?
Uh, abstain. Abstain.
And Weitzel?
Abstain.
All right. Two, three, four, five, six. Motion does not pass. Six in favor, four no, three abstentions. Thank you. All right, so if nobody has any problem, we will defer it and take a look at it again.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move to accept the corrected minutes as presented to the board members of, as a future record of our board, uh, proceedings. Thank you.
So your, so your motion is to adopt these minutes?
Adopt the corrected.
Yes, your version, just for clarification.
All board members.
I second that.
Was that you, Winston?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, uh, any discussion?
I have a, this is Arlene Velasco. Um, I work full time and I just got the the amended versions today. That does not give me adequate enough time to even look at them. So I feel like it's not fair to have a vote on these additions on this meeting. And it's, it's rather upsetting to me that these things get, um, sent so late in the day.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like, just like to offer an explanation and I actually agree with, uh, Board Member Vel- Velasco, um, I had submitted to the corrections, uh, to, uh, the board members for, uh, February and March, so they should have been able to review them and in quite adequate time today. Uh, actually, it was yesterday that I tried to submit them. However, uh, I could not get him any information on the board, uh, drive for submittal, and I did not get any response until midday today. So I agree that all board members need to have adequate time and um, with that, I would certainly be willing, uh, with consideration for our more diligent board members to have the time, uh, to adequately review and uh, even, uh, refer back to the meeting recording for verification of these corrections. So I, I would be willing to withdraw the motion so that it could actually, uh, be accomplished.
Okay, so basically we're doing what I said we could do, which is just to defer them.
Mm-hmm. Yes, but Chair, if I.
Yes, Winston.
I also, and I appreciate that you wanted to defer them, but I think it was important for us to have this there. And for those members that got them, uh, late, I also believe that we should have time to review them because they, we need to understand, do these meeting minutes comport with our meeting? So I would urge all board members to compare these side by side and play the tape. Play February's tape and see, wow. And then you'll understand why these meeting minutes are so important, that we have them for us and for the community for, to reflect, uh, that reflected a, uh, true and accurate meeting for ourselves and, and everybody that has to refer to them. So I also support a deferral of these so that we have time to look at both of them and and listen to the tape at the same time. So you can understand what we're actually saying. We're not just saying no to say no.
So withdraw your motion.
I think Michelle did.
Uh, uh, point of order, Mr. Chair, I believe a lot of the centers on the fact that we get the minutes to the meetings only a couple of days before the next meeting. We need to, as, as Larry Varey of the Pearl City Board has recommended, we need to have the minutes of our meetings for the board members to review the draft minutes two weeks after the subject meetings, not one day or two days or three days before the next meeting, which really puts us in a bind. All of us who are diligent about reviewing and checking the minutes and all those, including the Neighborhood Board Secretary who just, uh, wants to go along with whatever is written.
Well, we, we can't change the law at this meeting, so I mean, I'm just asking you.
Well, I don't know that that's a law. I think it's a policy and the Neighborhood Commission.
That's the sunshine law.
Not, well, I think we need to create and a policy that improves that law. We can do that. It says within forty days. That could be within two weeks. So let's work on that and make it better for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, so does anyone have a problem with deferring this? All right, seeing none, we will take a look at this again, and I myself personally will take a look at both sets and the video. Subdistrict reports, St. Louis Heights. Remember, Hasina, got anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay, uh, Kapahulu, I believe. That used to be George, um, does anyone from Kapahulu want to take on this role? All right, we can circle back to that. Um, Diamond Head, Linda.
It's in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports, Laiahe Avenue.
So I made the report at the mayor's town hall meeting. I asked to have the parking spaces back.
Point of order, point of order, Chair. I don't think we can have a report if there haven't been any meetings in the committee.
Well, I think this is more about if someone had a, had a committee meeting, that's fine, but we, we, we have time.
I don't think, I think the structure of our meetings is that we have to have committees and they have to meet before the chair can announce what everybody feels because everybody feels is not represented in just the chair's, uh, verbiage.
I didn't really get that, but.
Okay, the, the, the chair is reporting whatever, but nobody met to decided to decide whatever.
Okay, well, I was just opening it up to if anyone had anything to say on these, but if nobody has any committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports? Did anyone have a committee and meet? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, board members attending other board meetings, did you want to bring that up?
Thank you. Uh, several of us went to the town hall meeting.
That's not a board.
I brought up the parking and they said they would look into it. They have looked into it, um, we still don't have an answer. And I asked them about some of the trees. They said they would get back to me and I have not heard from anyone.
Yes, Linda, what is your point of order?
Thank you. Um, you asked for board meetings, not town halls, so I think this is not. I mean, we can all say what we said at the town hall, but this is following, it's just the same thing she just said. And there hasn't been a meeting of the members of the Laiahe, um, committee since the city gave us back our, our street. So I don't know why we're still talking about it.
I don't know, but does anyone have any, does, does anyone have any reports for this subject? Okay, hearing none. If there is no other business before us, it is now eight thirty PM. I think the one thing that we all learned from this meeting is that if half the people don't show up on the agenda, we actually complete it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I think that, uh, Board Member Saint Dennis probably had something very substantive. I think that, uh, Board Member Saint Dennis probably had something very substantive to inform the board of, and whether or not it is, uh, entitled on the agenda. It appears that, uh, whatever she is reflecting, perhaps maybe, uh, should have come when there was a discussion of the mayor's, uh, town hall. Uh, so perhaps that could fall under that, uh, where several board members spoke and, and this could just be, uh, in addition to that, uh, that we could accept as it, for informational purposes. We're not taking any action on it.
Sure. So-
Chair, if-
Yes.
I noticed that the last meeting, we didn't even get through our agenda in time for the, uh, elected officials to talk. So if we keep allowing other verbiage under other topics, it's, it's not going to work.
Yeah, well, it worked out today because half the people that were scheduled to be on the agenda didn't show up, so gave us extra time.
I'm just, I'm sorry, but I'm just tired of, uh, hearing reports when there's no committee meetings because the person is not representing the the whole people that worked on that whole situation for two and a half months.
That is duly noted, board member. Um, so it is now eight thirty-two PM and we will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Chair.